Tomorrow's camineroom to the fields.
Hi guys.
Hello.
Oh my gosh, well at least the council's here. That's all we need. The mayor emailed me at 6:24 and said, "Did you send me the link?" I'm like, "I sent it on Friday." Yeah, so hopefully he will be able to get on, but the most important people are here, obviously.
Have we heard from Jean? Cause it's...
I'm there.
I thought I saw her pop up.
Hi Jean, hello.
Jean's here. So that's what I'm saying. At least, oh, and here's Chuck.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi Chuck, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday Chuck.
Happy birthday Chuck. Happy birthday.
Chuck, the mayor emailed me at 6:24 and said, "Did you send me the link?" I'm like, "Mayor, I sent it on Friday, so I hope he can get on." I re-sent him the link. Let's see what happens. But the whole council's here. Hi Donnell. Donnell's here.
Okay, is John on?
John is here, yes.
Alright.
Very proud of John.
I'm proud of him too.
And we are recording, I see?
Yes, yes. And I just want to tell everybody that tonight on the, there's a resolution that is a, it has to go with the intro budget down to the DCA. So, one at a time in the next, if you can do it tomorrow, everybody has to sign this. It's a group affidavit. So, you know, if you can make a trip to the municipal building sometime tomorrow morning, just quick, sign your name, I can meet you outside, whatever we need to do, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello Josh.
Hi Josh.
Good Josh, you made it.
Early finally.
You didn't have that drive.
Saved me a lot of time, I do this more often now.
Certain people would love that.
I love this, I think this is great.
We do this all the time.
Donnell wants to do this more often, right?
I love everything electronic.
The mayor's texting me. Yeah.
Just so you know, you might hear some dogs barking in for a while.
You might hear mine also. I told my family, "Quiet now." Yeah.
You might hear my two and a half year old screaming too, so my apologies in advance.
All we could, all could do is we could all mute our lines. At the beginning of the meeting, Marcy, if you want, I can just ask everyone to, the public certainly to mute their lines, because otherwise you could just get a little bit unwieldy.
Yeah, I mean,
Lower left.
Hopefully, the public will only be able to hear us for right now. And then during public session, I can unmute them one at a time.
Perfect.
And I hope it works. I tried this with my family. I had some where the public and some were us. And it worked well, so.
Gosh, you look like you're sitting in a very lonely closet.
No, I'm not. It's dark. I have these lights, but there's no outdoor lights. There's nothing coming through the window. I'm in a bunker.
He's in a bunker. He's in a timeout.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call a meeting. Wonder, is Jean on? Cause I don't see her picture.
I'm here. Jean is on.
Okay, alright.
I think you have to flip back.
Alright, Marcy, would you read the statement please?
Yes, I will. "Equipped notice of this special meeting has been provided to the public and the press on March 24th, 2020, and was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10, semicolon, 4 dash 7." Council Vice President Orburger.
Here. There.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Van Tassel.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Here.
Council President Shortway.
Present.
Okay.
So let's look the flag. I have a little flag you see in the background.
Say it.
Unless you have one in your office, you stand.
I need one in my office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, now we move to public comments. For current agenda items only, limited three minutes per person. I don't know if anybody's there, but may have a motion to open the floor to public comments. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't see anyone. Marcy, is anyone on?
I don't see anybody. Let me just look really quick. Give me one second. Yeah, I, I, oh wait, there are six attendees. I do, yes, okay. I will announce who it is.
Okay.
We have Jessica Palladini. Hello, Ms. Palladini.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great, this is great. Thank you for doing this, Mayor and Council. I just want to say the same thing I've been saying for a week now. We need a plan. Vernon residents and, and you're doing a great job, Mayor, with all your updates and everything. But people want a plan. They want to know, where do they go if they need to get tested? I heard today, St. Anthony Hospital, but that's in New York State. They're saying PNC Center, they're saying Randolph County College of Morris. They're saying Paramus. People need to know what to do. Can we have some kind of plan?
Can anybody see me?
Oh hello, hello doctor.
There we go.
You can hear me.
We can hear you.
I'm screaming guys. Let me see if I can get in my...
Just bear with us, Ms. Palladini. Here's the mayor.
I have been screaming, you guys have been talking, I just couldn't get in.
Yeah, you got in the wrong way. We'll go over it tomorrow. But Ms. Palladini just asked you a question, so I don't know if you have to answer it.
Jesse, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Stay safe.
What was your question?
Every day. My question was, will we have some kind of a plan that is created by the mayor and council to tell Vernon residents what to do and how to handle certain things moving forward? And an example I gave was, there's a woman around the corner from me who now has coronavirus. What do we do if we need to be tested? Where do we go? Who do we call?
Well, there are only, right now, there are only two mobile testing centers, and they are not in this area.
I didn't think so, yeah.
They're not in this area. I think that they're working on trying to get something in this area. But you should call, there's, go to the Sussex County website. The interesting thing about this, Jesse, is that under this state of emergency, medical emergency, that the governor has declared, it's the Sussex, it's the Health Department, the Sussex County Health Department, all of the county's health departments that actually call the shots, in conjunction with our manager of our, of emergency services. They actually recommend that individuals who don't show symptoms not be tested. In fact, if you go to your health provider, if you call your health provider, one of the things that he will ask you if you show symptoms. And if you say no, he or she will tell you not to come. It's really difficult to get tested because there's a limit in the number of test kits and the test supplies. It's really an awful situation. That's not a great answer, and it's not one that I like to give, but it's the best one that I can give at this point. We, the mayors have, have weekly meetings with the Sussex County Health Department by telephone, and they all ask the same question. We're all getting the same question.
I know you do. I certainly don't want to be tested if I don't show symptoms, but what they're saying now is just stay home unless you have shortness of breath. And that's my number one risk, shortness of breath. So I just want to know, you know, where do I go in that case? So basically, I just have to contact the county health department?
Contact the county health department and call your, and they're going to tell you to call your healthcare professional. That's what they're going to tell you.
Alright, thank you. And again, Mayor, thank you for your great updates on a regular basis.
Well, you know, I appreciate the public saying that. I'm trying to do what I consider, I guess, not only our governor, but one that I'm trying to model myself after, I think, is like Governor Cuomo. I mean, he really gives some good updates. And while people know that Governor Cuomo or I or any governor of America can't solve this problem, there are so many unknowns, and people just want to know something. So that's what I'm attempting to do.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a gentleman named Ed that I'm going to let speak. Hi, do you have a comment or a question?
Yes, how are you?
Good.
I'm a local resident here in Vernon. And lately, I've been seeing a lot of out-of-state plates up in, up in our town. And I'm concerned that we have a lot of summer communities, and we also have a resort complex here that is still open, maybe for business. And the governor seems to have stated to most people in New Jersey, if they have secondary homes, like summer homes in the shore or in the mountains, that they should stay hunkered down where they live and not commute around the state and spread maybe the virus that they don't know they have to other areas of the state. I'm wondering, was, how is Vernon's approach to this? And also how, as our council, our mayor, you're here to protect the people of this community as well as this county from outsiders coming in and using property they, they actually own or maybe have access to. But during this time, it's kind of difficult that they should not hunker down and prevent this from being spread. Can you answer that for me?
I can give you some comments on this, but it's not going to be an exact answer. We in Vernon are dealing with some of the same problems that people in shore communities deal with. That is, we have individuals who own second homes. Our governor, the governor of New York, they've advised people not to go to those places, but people go. There's, for example, one facility here that has not officially opened yet, won't open until May 1st. And they had individuals who have actually come to that place. They have a gate, an electronic key card in order to get in, but people are parked all on the outside and just walked in there. And not only are individuals coming there, but they're bringing in some of their friends and relatives because of the relatively low numbers of confirmed cases that we have here in Sussex County in Vernon Township. The quote word is out from people in New York City and in suburban areas near New York City that Vernon is a good place to wait out the virus. And that's causing problems for us. It really is. I have actually approached the governor and asked if there's anything in the governor's decrees or in the fact that I've declared a state of emergency. And our attorney, I had asked Josh to see if he could get some information for me. And we haven't had a chance to talk, Josh, and if, in fact, you don't want to talk out of term right now, without talking to me first, okay. But we are trying to find ways to see if we can address that issue. I do know that once people are in those facilities, those are facilities that they own, I'm not really so sure what kind of powers we have from a standpoint of legal powers to go in and force them to come out. I'm not really so sure. You know, I think these are untested waters here, they really are. And we've been all caught by surprise. We know what we want to do, we know what we need to do, but I'm not so sure if we can actually do it.
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to add to the citizen's question. We have been, as you stated, we've been in frequent communication with the governor's office regarding the ability of Vernon to close off the vacation communities and secondary residents from people where it's not a primary residence. I think what the governor's office is wrestling with is the ability to restrict the movement of people both within the state and out of the state. Over the weekend, there were going to be some restrictions on travel into and out of the state of New Jersey from other states. There was all questions about enforceability, and ultimately that didn't come to pass. But Ed, to assure you that the mayor and I will continue to communicate with the governor to find an acceptable solution to this.
I've also gotten questions and phone calls from individuals who live in private lake communities. And I'm not really so sure why they are calling me, asking me to stop people from coming to those private lake communities. And when I ask them, "Have you talked to your lake community president or your governing body?", they say no. And I said, "That's a place where you can go", because actually, I, well, I'm not so sure if lake communities can prevent people from coming in, especially if they own those places. But, you know, everybody's coming to the mayor, and I understand that, and coming to the council, and I understand that, but we would love to get some help. In fact, some people have told me that they've gone to some of their, their leaders, and they said, "Go to the mayor." I mean, I think that that's passing the buck.
Mayor, I appreciate your comment on that, but I believe basically if it can't be resolved on the local level, that there needs to be input from the higher level to be able to put some regulations in place that would prevent people from spreading this, this virus from inner-city communities, that there is quite a bit going on up here in this area because they're coming to go to their vacation homes.
I agree.
I truly believe that there's a time limit here where we can prevent this. But basically, as the weather changes and the people try to get out of those hotspots to feel that they will be safe here, that we will then spread that virus more intently in our own county and communities where it's not that serious at the moment. But if we don't step forward and do that in a manner, you know, quicker manner than we are right at the moment, then we won't be able to stop that spread. So I leave it in your capable hands, and hopefully that the governor and you and the county can get together and make a decision on that and to protect the people in this area where we only have right now a few cases in our town and then, and some throughout the county. So thank you for your input. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Ed, I'm pushing that, I'm screaming as loud as I possibly can. I agree with you wholeheartedly, and thank you for your understanding. But keep pushing me, because I'm going to keep pushing the county and keep pushing the governor.
Well, as an ex-military man, Mayor, I think you, you know what that's all about.
Absolutely.
Alright, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Marcy, is there anyone else?
I don't see anybody else. With the hand.
Saying that there's no one else? Excuse me?
Nope, I don't see anybody else.
Marcy, do they know they need to raise their hand to ask a question? I know that seems kind of silly, but just to, to make sure everyone who's listed as an attendee knows if they want to ask a question, they just need to put their little hand.
Right. No, I don't see anybody else.
Okay, so no members of the public wishing to come forward? May have a motion to close the floor to public comments.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes. May have a motion to adopt the following minutes. March 9th, 2020, regular meeting. March 9th, 2020, special budget meeting.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody in the negative? Okay. Consent agenda. Okay, Resolution 20-93, refund overpayment, Block 267, Lot 33. Malwiski, this resolution authorized... What's that? Did I hear somebody? Okay, this resolution authorizes a refund overpayment. Resolution 20-94, refund for totally disabled veteran, Block 578, Lot 5. Logic, this resolution authorizes a totally disabled veteran refund. Resolution 20-95, refund for totally disabled veteran, Block 594, Lot 25. Sanchez, this resolution authorizes a totally disabled veteran refund. Resolution 20-96, disabled, total disabled veteran, Block 594, Lot 25. Sanchez, this resolution authorizes a totally disabled veteran refund. Resolution 20-100, authorization to endorse a treatment works approval application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for construction of an onsite wastewater treatment and disposal system alteration at Hidden Valley Village Condo Association located at Block 451, Lot 12, formerly Block 192.03, Lot 1. This resolution authorizes the endorsement of a treatment work application. Resolution 20-101, resolution authorizing a sidebar agreement with UAW Local Number 2326. This resolution authorizes a sidebar agreement. Resolution 20-102, authorizing the cancellation of outstanding checks over six months old to municipal cash balances. This resolution authorizes the cancellation of outstanding checks over six months old. Resolution 20-103, approving active volunteer, approving active volunteer fireman for membership in the New Jersey State Firemen's Association. In parentheses, Taylor. This resolution authorizes membership into the New Jersey State Firemen's Association. Resolution 20-104, resolution authorizing use of three-year average for tax collection rate and reserve for uncollected taxes calculation. This resolution authorizes the use of a three-year average for tax collection rate in reserve. Resolution 20-105, emergency temporary appropriations. This resolution authorizes an emergency temporary resolution appropriation. Resolution 20-106, resolution of authorizing consent to the transfer and assignment of Vernon Township Cable Franchise Agreement from Service Electric Cable TV of New Jersey, Inc. to CSC TKR LLC. This resolution authorizes consent to the transfer and assignment from Service Electric Cable to CSC TKR LLC. Resolution 20-107, resolution approving a settlement agreement between Vernon Township and employee number 866. This resolution approves a settlement agreement. May I have a motion to adopt the consent resolution?
You know, I'm sorry, Council President Shortway. I updated the agenda. You asked me to add Resolution 20-108 for, to approve, I'll read it, "A resolution approving participation with the State of New Jersey Federal Grant Program administered by the Division of Criminal Justice, Department of Law and Public Safety." This is a resolution to participate with the State of New Jersey for a federal grant program.
Is this one for $60,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And I added it on, and I, I think you didn't get the updated...
I know I did. I just pulled out the wrong one and started reading. So this is for a $60,000 grant. It's got to be signed and sent down to DC, correct?
Yes.
Alright, do I have a motion to, to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion. May I ask for 20103 to be pulled, to be separate?
Yes. That's the one with the sidebar, correct, John?
Yes, for the fireman.
Okay. Alright, the side fireman. Alright, that one will be, we'll pull. Anything else?
I make a motion to adopt the rest. Second.
Okay, can we do a roll call on this, please?
Yes. Vice President Orburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 103?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Orburger?
Upstate.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes.
Motion.
And just for the record, I just wanted to say that I do have the Resolution 20-108. Marcy did give it to the council, so it may just have gotten lost, but just for the public's notice, that did have it.
Yes, great.
Okay, we're on number eight, introduction of the 2020 municipal budget. Resolution 20...
Do you have a resolution underneath that?
I have eight, and then I have the Resolution 20-97 under it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll read it. Governing body certification pursuant to PL 217 C.183 of Compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidelines on the Consideration of Arrest and Conviction Records in Employment Decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This resolution certifies that Vernon Township's hiring practice complies with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20-97?
Motion.
Can we have a second? We have two motions.
Second.
You're seconding, Mark?
Yeah, I got it.
And John, you...
John made the motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Orburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy? Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes.
This is the resolution that needs the group affidavit signed, so that this is the one I was talking about earlier.
Okay. Resolution Number 20-98, self-examination of the 2020 budget resolution. This resolution authorizes the self-examination of the budget. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 20-98?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Vice President Orburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 20-99, introduction of 2020 budget. This resolution authorizes the introduction of the budget. May I have a motion to introduce the 2020 municipal budget?
I have a few comments on this introduction or prior to this introduction. Any objections?
No, go ahead.
First, actually on page one, Bud Jones, his first name, he just needs an N in it for Francis. I guess his name is spelled wrong. But I just wanted to be fair to the mayor, and just to let him, I mean, the last email that we received stated that the mayor has decided to use $1 million of our fund balance to try to offset this budget. And I just wanted to know, make it clear that I cannot support the budget for that reason. I mean, to just use the fund balance for, at this time, for that matter, it's really kind of giving a false hope to residents. I could support it if there were cuts to the budget. If we could come up with, if we're going to use $1 million of the fund balance, come up with $500,000 in cuts in this budget. You know, people are out there suffering. We all know. We all know somebody that's lost a job. We all know someone, and we know that, we have no idea how long this will end, you know, last. I think at this point, we need to drastically cut unnecessary spending. You know, when you, when going through the budget, when we look at the anticipated revenue, it states that we'll be receiving $275,000 for the hotel tax. Right now, the hotel, they're, they're closed. I mean, is this number still accurate? Will this pandemic affect that? Is that, you know, is that something that, that we should have been looking at? Because like I said, at this point, I mean, we're looking into May, but we really have no idea. What'll happen if Mountain Creek's unable to pay their debt? You know, I know that they started paying, but right now, everything is opening much later. You know, I know that they started paying, but right now, everything is opening much later. And then again, as soon as everyone's back to work, hopefully, it'll take a while before they, some of them catch up. If they can't pay, will we be required to take out emergency bond and borrow money so we could pay the county? I mean, this is something we were faced with, you know, back at the end of two thousand eighteen. You know, and as with, you know, having a plan again, does, you know, do we have a plan as to what will happen? What will we be doing if they don't pay? I'm still, I'm still at, you know, capping the increases for the non-union employees at two percent. The average increase for twenty twenty for all the other employees was one point six two five. You know, when you go down through sheet twelve on the budget, it shows the administration salaries. They total one sixty-five. That includes the fifteen thousand dollar raise, I believe, for the business administrator. What happened to the four percent across the board? I don't, you know, I don't see that being reflective in there. Also, the four thousand dollar stipend that's in there. That's for the, the business administrator told me that that was for the payroll clerk. And I'm just using this as as an example, but when I look at, let's just say, the payroll clerk salary over the last couple of years, and the numbers are varying, by the way, from the payroll change I received to the budget, but it would look like over the last two years that that specific position would be receiving a total of eleven, over eleven percent increase in two years. You know, if the business administrator, if he's named as that domestic abuse coordinator, and if he's, if everyone's agreeing to give him the fifteen thousand dollar increase, well, then maybe he should be the one that's administering, you know, the domestic abuse instead of paying another employee to do this. I was also against hiring part-time employees. At the last meeting I mentioned that I discovered, we did hire somebody in February. Did somebody tell me, is that person that was hired related to someone in that department? You know, or are we back to the same practice? You know, we need to remove money for all unnecessary educational classes. New education classes that are required should remain in this budget. We should reduce the expenses for the, you know, the committees and and the some, even some of the commissions to five hundred dollars each, you know, public safety. Are, do they need more money so they could have, so they could acquire some some protective equipment? The Municipal Services Act, we had a mild winter. Can that be reduced? We have four hundred thousand dollars in there still. As far as I also think, I think the capital plan needs to be revisited. All non-emergent items should be removed. I mean, to just have it as business, we're looking at this as business as usual. We're just taking money out of our, out of our fund. You know, we need to take an aggressive approach, you know, and and we need to actually automate the online services as soon as possible. We should have more money in there for that. You know, I mean, it just so happened, nobody knew this was coming, but it certainly would have helped if we did have some of those products online. Thanks for listening.
The biggest thing before we vote is I've talked to Joe Hessian. And Mountain Creek will be making their tax payments and their financial obligations related to the stores. So that being said, can I have a motion?
So no one has any, no one has any comments on anything I said?
I, I think you're totally right in what you say. I don't want to see us taking out of the fund balance just to keep everything else. I think we have to go back and look at where we can make the cuts because we only have so much in that fund balance, and I'd rather not take that much out. I know everybody's hurting. We're all taxpayers, but it, we just have to be smarter with what we have.
Any other comments?
Yes, actually, as the mayor pointed out, our fund balance should be at least at four point one million. It sits at three point seven. It'll now sit at two point seven. And we're not even at the state of, you know, what the fallout from this, from this Corona pandemic. But like I said, I could see everyone's made their mind up. It's just spend, 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 you know, and no consideration for the taxpayer.
Mister, Mr. Shortway?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me just say, you know, I have great respect for the councilwoman's statement, but she, I think she's given the impression that everyone is just spend, spend, spend. That is absolutely not the situation. Our, the kinds of things that she mentioned, other than the fact of looking at some of the capital expenditures, wouldn't even impact this budget at all. What the public needs to know and what I want to put on record is that the budget that we had agreed to with the council after three very sometimes contentious budget meetings was that the average increase would be fifty-nine dollars per household. I went back to the council after looking at some situations and after, you know, looking at the situation of the job losses and things, and this budget here actually would result in an eighty-one cent per month increase. And as it relates to using the fund balance, this is exactly what the fund balance is to be used for. It's kind of a savior's account, kind of a rainy day account. And and not only is it raining, but we're going to have a thunderstorm. And, you know, I'm really, I'm really somewhat surprised of the council persons who are bringing this up right now. Nobody has even communicated to me that they were going to make any objection to the agreements that they had already made. And at this point in time, to really, to verbalize this, I, you know, I, I, you know, I've got to believe that every council person joins me in thinking about the taxpayers, but to give the impression that everybody's got their made, mind made up, spend, spend, spend. We don't spend, and spend, and spend, and that's really not the situation. If in fact, there were, there are particular cuts that, that the council persons want to make in terms of the capital budget. If they want to reduce our ability to provide our police department, radio communications, or things of that nature. If they want to reduce our ability to be able to provide the kind of equipment for our road department or and and put us on a situation whereby we're going to be bonding for all these things, they ought to come to me and say it, or in writing, just let me know. Well, let's not wait until the last minute to get in public here and pretend like, you know, you know, there are only certain individuals who are interested in the taxpayers and the rest of us are not. I'd like to have this budget introduced, and there'll be another time, and I hope that that I could hear from council people, there'll be another time for us to actually vote on and examine the budget. But it's, I'm just really shocked at this. I really am. I'm shocked.
You know, you know, Mayor, I'm, I'm actually shocked that you would say that because with all due respect, I have visited you in your office, and you know what? There was a time when you were not that welcoming, so.
You know, you know, you know what, you know what, Councilwoman?
If I can just interject here, let's not go through this tit for tat. Let's talk about the budget and then let's vote.
And I just want to say, Councilwoman, you are not going to get away with these hit and run tactics with me. What you're talking about has nothing at all to do with this budget. Has nothing at all to do with this budget.
Your comments for another time. It's my opinion, and you know what? I do not believe you should be using that amount of money out of the fund balance.
Well, you said that. Let's see, let's just see, can we get the budget going or not, Mr. Council President?
Okay, does anybody, council members have any other comments? Therefore, can I have a motion?
Motion.
To, Mark, you gonna make the motion?
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Orburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
No.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Council.
You're welcome, Mayor. Okay, number nine. Introduction, first reading of proposed ordinance. Ordinance twenty dash ten. An ordinance of the township of Vernon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter five zero nine of municipal code of the township of Vernon entitled taxation to provide for an annual allocation of the hotel and motel, room and transient accommodation occupancy tax. This ordinance amends and supplements chapter five zero nine of the municipal code, code entitled taxation. May I have a motion to introduce twenty dash ten with the public hearing to be held on April thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Orburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
No.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Yes.
Council President Shortway?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comments limited to three minutes on any topic. Please note, public comments are limited to the three minutes, as I mentioned. May I have a motion to open the floor to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No oppositions? Okay, Marcy, you see anyone who desires to speak?
I have Ms. Palladini.
Okay, Ms. Palladini.
I just want to say that I think this is a great way to have a meeting, and you should consider doing it either all the time or more often. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else, Marcy?
Um, I do not see anybody else with their hand raised.
Okay, just give them a couple of seconds just to make sure.
Nope, nobody.
Seeing no more members of the public wishing to come forward, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Mayor's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Council President and Council. Let me just use my last few minutes to just verbalize my, my, my last update that I've just put on, on the webpage. Of the most stressing thing that that exists here, and that's this whole thing about this virus. We had three new cases today, and these new cases bring out town's total up to fourteen. That's our, about eleven percent of the county's total of one hundred and twenty-two. The Sussex County Health Department has also advised as of today that there were two more deaths in Sussex County, a ninety-three-year-old male and a ninety-six-year-old female, both from Newton. This brings the toll for Sussex County up to three, and unfortunately, all three of them are from Newton. You know, in, in every society, in every community, there's always what I call that one percent that won't work with others. No, those are people who want to go their own way. They don't really care that much about society. All they care about is their own individual rights and their right to do whatever they want to do. And in our town, that includes those individuals who removed or destroyed the signs that I had posted at the Maple Grange Park, in the playing fields and the basketball court, directing that any individuals who are participating in activities there do it in a manner where they practice social distancing. And and if anyone knows who those individuals were, I'd like for them to please provide that information to the mayor's office or to the Vernon Police Department. And in response to these acts of vandalism, I have ordered the removal of the basketball goals from the backboards and the removal of and confinement of the soccer goals from the playing field. And these signs will be remade and reposted. You know, evidence around the nation reveals that there is a group of individuals, again, I call them this one percent, that don't really get the fact that the nation is battling this virus for our way of life. Look how much it has restricted us. And not in our way of life, but for our own individual lives. And for those members of that one percent who are, who have committed this act of vandalism in our park and who refuse to obey the social distancing rules, my approach at this point in time, and I might have to change that, is to try to identify them and deliver to them the appropriate consequences of their actions and to not allow them to force me to deny access to the park to the ninety-nine percent of law-abiding and rules-obeying Vernon citizens who walk the park daily. I, I see Mr. Van Tassel and his spouse out there every morning. I go to the park three times a day. And people need this for their mental and emotional and health well-being. I also hear there's a large number of people who are saying, Mayor, please close the parks. But, you know, I don't really want to do that unless I really have to. So I'd like to ask the public to join me ensuring those one percent that we ninety-nine percent of Vernon strong, that we're not going to allow them to force us to do something that we want to do, and we're going to keep ourselves strong. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
You're welcome. Council comment. Ms. Murphy, would you please start?
For, I was wondering, when payroll changes are put through, I think it might be a wise decision if the council passed a resolution that requires the payroll clerk to either reference a union contract, an ordinance or a resolution number on the payroll change form prior to it being, the changes being made, because I think that what that will do is it will keep, it should keep everything really in line as far as, you know, having somebody just sign a payroll change that had not been authorized. Question I have is, is there a process by which the turf fields are ever disinfected or sanitized? I mean, it's just a question that came up. Somebody asked me, I said, I have no idea, but it, something that they brought up because of this. So I just thought I'd mention it. And then I also wanted to mention, I know the gentleman was talking about residents coming to town and, you know, maybe staying at their, their second homes. But I know I have mentioned to everyone that some of the shore communities have actually banned short-term rentals in the time being during this process while the governor's, you know, order is in effect. And I'm just wondering if that's, I know I passed it on to the mayor also, whether or not that's something that's being considered. Because, like I said, there's, not that it's at next to me, but if, if that's something that's occurring, I believe the hotels have closed where they're not renting. But again, if, if there are short-term rentals and there are people, you know, coming into the community, that could be a concern for the neighbors. So just wanted to, like I said, and I think Ocean City, I think, joined Long Beach Town, Long, yeah, Long Beach Township, where they actually instituted that, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Van Tassel?
Yeah, just stay safe, stay healthy, and wash your hands. Yep. That's all.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Weller?
I just want to say, Mayor Burrell, thank you for the updates. I appreciate them. I do have a question for you. I know you post on your personal Facebook page. Do you have a public mayor page at this time, and is that something you're considering doing? Because I know a lot of us have taken, at least I know I have, I've copied and pasted your info and put it on other sites and on my personal page so that the town can see it. Is that something you're considering doing or something that you're, you're currently doing?
Well, it's something that I've thought about. In fact, I thought about that as soon as I was elected, but, you know, I, I, I don't think it's going to be something that I'm going to do because of the fact that I, I only got a, actually got a Facebook page when I decided to run for mayor. And I, I can post stuff, but I'm not all that savvy as it relates to it. And, you know, as Ms. Palladini probably knows, I don't answer a lot of people back. I post information just listen, I don't want to get into a back and forth, and I don't want to end up having to cut some people off. Because if you have an official mayor's page, you know, the mayor should be open to talking to everybody. And so for that reason, you know, I'll think about it, but it's not something that I'm considering doing right now. Thank you.
That's, that's very well. Just know that we'll, we'll continue to share all the great information.
Please do, and I appreciate that. A lot of people do it. I see a lot of people share that, share that, including Ms. Palladini on her page and a lot of other pages. Thank you.
Absolutely, and everyone just stay, stay safe, like Mark said, wash your hands.
Thanks, Kelly. Mr. Vice President?
My only comments are to thank the businesses and the people that are supporting those businesses that are out there helping to feed some of the folks in town.
Yeah.
Second emotion.
Second motion.
Thanks, John. My comments, I did post these, but I'll read them anyway. First and foremost, I wish you all good health, and please follow the Centers for Disease Control, you know, over this COVID-19 prevention guidelines, including washing your hands. Secondly, I'm receiving communications via Messenger from citizens. I want the citizens to understand that I don't open these, I won't respond to these because they could be subject to Oprah. Any communications regarding municipal business should be made through my township email, which is hshortway@vurnantrip.com. These emails are permanent public record and are subject to Oprah. I will make every attempt to respond in a reasonable timeframe pertaining to council business, all other inquiries related to municipal day-to-day operations and administration responsibilities I will be forward to the mayor and the business administrator. Lastly, I ask people to read New Jersey Herald's article, "Mountain Creek Offers Help to Local Businesses Impacted by Shutdown." Joe Hessian and his team are committed to our community, it's understandable how many, how many harbor negative feelings because of prior owners. But I give this new Mountain Creek team an opportunity to change those perceptions. Mountain Creek is owned and controlled by a new team, I experienced Joe's sincerity and commitment during our negotiations surrounding the bankruptcy. Mountain Creek paid its first quarterly 2020 sewer obligation early and provided even more funds than were due. Joe has ensured me that although they too are negatively financially impacted by the crisis, taxes and obligations will be paid on time and in the full amount. Joe and many of his team are Vikings, they grew up here. And as our community has done throughout the years, we do help one another. The Trax Deli, delivery volunteers, and Eagle Scout, and others carry on our tradition of aiding one another during a crisis. That is truer today during the COVID-19 epidemic than ever before. God bless you, and I wish you all the best of health, so thank you.
You too, man.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for those nice comments, Mr. Council President.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. That being said.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go. Thank you, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody, stay safe.
Stay well, thank you.
Bye now.